Um. Welcome to the uh select board meeting for Tuesday, May thirteenth for the town of Georgetown. Um it's uh seven oh four um we're gonna be recording this for our YouTube station. And um. Yeah, first off, uh I will have a moment of silence um in memory of John Tyler. Um yeah. Um first off, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will uh let you go.
All right, under items to be added to the agenda tonight, I am gonna be adding an item that should have been on our special meeting last week, and that is to whether or not to direct me to create a warrant article for the warrant at the next meeting regarding making the clerk and tax collector appointed. The board had previously voted to direct me to bring that forward, and so we'll do that tonight. My apologies, it wasn't on the printed agenda. And I did want to flag and it'll appear on the next agenda, but we received some really great news from the uh Maine Climate Council about us receiving some grant funding with a Rousick. And so that will appear as correspondence on the next agenda, but it happened in between the agenda going out and this news bulletin, so I wanted to make sure we had it kind of current as well.
And I just wanna Tyler, I wanna thank uh you and Kathy Gravino, um Jess Weller. I don't know who else worked on that, maybe Roger uh for all y'alls effort efforts to bring that uh to a close. So, great job.
Thank you, Aria. And I would note that for scheduled appointments at seven fifteen tonight, we will be stopping business to meet with Harbor Master Hanstein to seek his input regarding a proposed federal buoy removal and a possible letter that the town would write. And an Erusek request regarding funding for the hook line and sinker. I had sent a note along to the board today about the minutes.
I would move to defer action on the minutes until the next meeting.
All right, Aria moved. Is there a second?
Uh are you seconding us Bronwyn? You you might be muted.
Oh, Bronwyn is unmuted, but I can't see her, hear her.
Yeah, I can't hear her either. But I do think it was a second.
Is that better? Yes, I was saying.
Yeah.
Was that a second Bronwyn?
Yes, it was a second.
All in favor.
All right, that is three to oh. Uh I would note that Mary had sent along the April financials via email. In terms of assessing items, the first item of business is the approval of a veteran's exemption for Linda McGilvery. And we have that here at the office. I would note we received this prior to the April one deadline. It actually came in on May twenty fifth, and we've been meaning to get it on to an agenda. It will apply next year. Should the board make a motion and vote to approve said said designation?
Move to approve.
Second.
Right, all in favor.
All right, three to zero. And so as we move on into assessing items or continue rather, uh we have a series of determinations to make on three abatements. And the first was an abatement from Five Eye Fuel uh requesting a significant valuation reduction. And our assessing agent came down a couple of weeks ago to visit all three of these properties because physically being present was important and based on a variety of factors. Uh Mr. Van Tynan felt that it was appropriate to deny the abatement application for Allison Bonnie doing business as Five Eye Fuel. And really noted that it was a unique property in a host of ways. And really felt that uniqueness came with some value, and I'm gonna quickly add in the fire chief. Yes, Bronwyn.
Um first of all, I would like to comment on the uh letter that you shared with us uh this afternoon from uh Mrs. Bonnie. Um and just to say that, of course, it's a seasonal business. Seasonal is the only way it could be a business because the the demand is seasonal as well as the supply. And I will move to approve um to to I will move to deny the abatement upon the advice of our assessor.
Is there a second?
Um I I just wanted to say, and you know, and thinking about that, and and thank you Tyler for getting us um Allison Bonnie's letter. And thinking about that, we've had other uh abatement requests anchored by um a reference to the seasonal use of someone's property, and we've denied those uh for similar reasons. So I will um second, I will second those in uh in equity and consistency in how we're making our decisions.
Any more discussion?
Um no, I'm I'm in agreement with Bill.
Okay.
That one. So um that case, all in favor of the denial of the abatement?
And that is unanimous to deny. The you uh a state of Eugene Reynolds had submitted an abatement for a property on lot three R lot thirty six that had belonged to the the Reynolds family for a considerable period of time. This was the property that had significant dereliction, and upon visiting the site, Mr. Van Tynan, I was there with him. He was brave and went inside and found the one safe spot. I stayed outside because I questioned whether or not it was a safe spot. Regardless, uh Mr. Van Tynan, upon seeing this building, recognized that this is a building that would take far more money than it is currently even assessed at to get it back to a livable condition and supports the abatement in removing the entire building valuation.
I move to um I move to approve the abatement request.
Second.
I'm with Aria and Bronwyn.
I agree with the valuation with the all in favor.
And that is three to zero. And the last abatement before us tonight is uh actually the first abatement that came in, or maybe our second one from Susan Hess, and we had sent this abatement application on to Bill Van Tynan because we had some questions about the view factor. The parcel previously had a view factor or magnitude of seven. And upon visiting the site with Mr. Van Tynan, we walked down to the closest point you could get to the water. We walked up near a beautiful stream. But upon visiting that site after the factoring in particular, Bill did feel that this uh the uh valuation should be reduced on the land valuation by ninety thousand dollars. And so I bring that forward. The land previously was two hundred and eighty eight thousand, and this abatement would bring it down to one hundred and eighty eight thousand. And I would note that at the end of that, we would be returning to Miss Hess a check in the amount of five hundred forty one dollars and change. Because at town meeting, we actually vote and will be doing a similar thing for the Reynolds. We vote a set of interest. If somebody has overpaid on taxes and by approving these abatements, should we approve this one as well? We admit that this person overpaid their taxes because the valuation was inaccurate. Does that make any sense? I'm saying a lot and yeah.
Yeah, I move to approve the partial abatement of the Hess property consistent with Van Tynan's report.
And is there a second?
Oh, I'll second if Bronwyn doesn't.
It looks like John is seconded. I know previously Bronwyn had abstained from the vote.
Right, right.
I just didn't want a second. I I'll be happy to vote.
All in favor.
And that looks like it is three to zero. And so the last bit of assessing that I'll touch on, and then we'll bring up the harbor master because we're very close to that appointment. I would just note that we have received one other abatement request that came in towards the end of last week. I will be beginning in the middle of all of our hearing schedules as well on doing the analysis on an abatement down towards the Mcmahan launch site owned by Tommy Burgess, and so we will bring that forward. I will say as well that we have had a couple of phone calls from folks inquiring when the deadline for abatements are. And that is May thirtieth at the end of this month. So it is possible we still could get in another one or two as well, and we will continue to work them the way we have. As long as the abatement is in by the thirtieth, we can still make some determinations after. So if we got one on May thirtieth, John might not have to vote on that one just on the way the queue goes. So for what that's worth. And that would kind of end our discussion on assessing items, and I would bring the harbor master up to the table. So we can have the camera zoom right in on him and definitely not block Bob Trebona in the next row.
This.
Yeah.
Just work.
So I think the first thing, and we have some action items as well related to whether or not to a direction and whether or not to draft a letter regarding possible the possible federal decision to remove some buoys. And we also had received that request from a Rousick regarding a funding of up to four thousand dollars to help with the removal of the hook line and sinker. And I know the select board wanted your opinion on that as well before they potentially went in any direction. Did I set the scene kind of well, folks?
Yeah, that's fine.
So what the the floor is yours.
Uh I guess it's I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. It seems like both of these things are really just political decisions. You folks need to need to need to make. I mean, I can give you any background if we start with uh hook line and sinker. I can give you any background you want. Uh probably, I mean, one thing that does seem relevant is Georgetown has a harbor master. And you folks paid me twenty eight hundred dollars last year to do a bunch of things, including probably waste twenty hours with a knucklehead who owns Hook Line and Sinker. And finally, when he he had Hook Line and Sinker and he had another boat down at Todd's Landing and a refrigerator and he had all these things. So you've kind of paid already to get uh this joker and his boats out of out of Georgetown. I'm not saying you shouldn't be neighborly and and chip into uh a Rousick. But one of the problems with a Rousick not having a harbor master and maybe not having a harbor ordinance and Woolwich, who's really more at fault because boat was illegally anchored there for weeks. And if they had a harbor master, he would have at least or she would have at least tried to do something about it. Not a guarantee that they would have gotten rid of the boat, but they kind of have the best of both worlds i- in a way, I think, a Rousick if they they don't want to pay anything for a harbor master, don't want to deal with the issues, don't want to have an ordinance. But then there's a problem, and so and so so chip in, and that's just that's not really my harbor master view. That's just, you know, one way you might, one way you might look at it.
I see Bronwyn's hand up.
Um Woody, I I think about this in connection with the whisper. And all that you went through trying to get uh help to remove it or to deal with it. And was there ever a suggestion? I mean, we voted two thousand dollars when you thought you had a salvage company that would take it. And that was, that decision was uh uh I don't know frowned upon uh contested, I guess, by at least one previous select board member uh who cited um another boat some quite some time ago that became derelict in Georgetown. Because he said it's the state's responsibility and we shouldn't pay anything. In the end, of course, we didn't have to pay because it all fell through, and the boat is still out there on the ledge, right? Pounding against, maybe it will one day break up. Um but I I'm just feeling as if uh this is not the kind of request that other towns would have responded to from us. Did we ask any other town for any kind of assistance with this? Because the boat came from uh other places, right? It had been derelict in Bath and yeah.
From Pittsburgh and and it was up in Bath. We know, we never asked anybody uh for anything. I would, because this was likely not to be the last abandoned boat we deal with, derelict boat. One thing I I would point out is, and I know the person who wanted the state to pay for it, I know they were well meaning, but I backtrack and talk to the the fellow who runs uh and I don't know if he submerged lands, the person who who was in charge of the Rosa Sharon fifteen years ago, and the state, I think, paid five thousand dollars. And the bulk of what was paid was the landowner who didn't want to look at that ugly boat. So there is no great state fund. That's not relevant to to Hook Line and Sinker. But if you think about these things as these problems come up, I think we're going down the the wrong road if we think, well, let's get the state to do it because the state has a bunch of money. Because they they general every that's what everybody says you're on your own. The Coast Guard doesn't seem to care. You know, the state says, geez, we'd love to help you. We don't have any money. And it's one of the reasons we pawn these, we just push these boats around. If the state had somebody who would take care of it because they're stuck with it where without where it, you know, wherever it ends up. I mean, that that is a that is a problem. I mean, it shouldn't be a feather in my cap that I got the boat to go up to to Woolwich where it, you know, where it where it sunk. Um because it's the state has to deal with it, and it's four times as much money once it sinks. Once this gets hold and you can't just tow it to a ramp and you know, put it on a flatbed, it's it's much, much more expensive when you just play musical chairs with it till it till it till it sinks. Woolwich should chip in. I mean, Woolwich, that thing sat anchored, you know, thirty feet from the beach in Woolwich, and if they had a harbor master, at least she could have been trying to chase that boat out of there. And if it went, you know, it went two hundred feet south, and so it's they, you know, they've kind of washed their hands of it. But yeah, I mean, there's a more of a reason for them to chip in. Both those towns don't have a harbor master and don't want to pay to, you know, and and if I spent twenty, I if I I had to spend twenty hours, that's four hundred dollars you guys paid, the taxpayers paid to get that boat out of to get that boat out of Georgetown. I'm not saying not to do it if it's a neighborly thing to do, but that's just, that's my two cents, I guess.
And I would just add to Woody's point, when he talks about the hours he put in, it wasn't just the nine to five hours. I frequently was talking to Woody during that endeavor on weekends and very early morning hours. So the town really did put in a lot of effort when it was here.
And I hear that. So it's Aria, I that um we would we have, you know, we are paying a harbor master to do whatever job needs to get done anyway. So I I guess from my perspective, I I understand we've already outlaid monies on that. Um I am somewhat concerned because that that boat could have easily stayed here and we could be in the same position. Um and so I am uh somewhat concerned about just saying not our problem anymore because it was our problem for months. Um I I'm conflicted about this. I truly am. Uh I don't want to raise, you know, it's I certainly don't want to um raise our budget anymore. Um although four thousand dollars, you know, when it comes down to it, um I guess one of the things I wonder about is is can we go back to Walter Briggs and say, who else have you, you know, have you asked Pittsburgh? You know, do we have a sense? I I have I've got his letter here. Has um have other uh communities committed to paying anything?
Because it shouldn't like, no, he hasn't said that.
Okay.
Other communities have not committed at this point, Aria, and in talking with Walter when this came up and I outright said this needs to go to the select board, you know. He had thought, because I suggested potentially reaching out to Westport Island because it was also in Westport's waters before they were driven out a while. And they were more focused on their immediate neighbors of Woolwich and Georgetown and a neighborliness side of things.
Please address.
So um yeah, so you know, I I really am conflicted because this could easily be a Georgetown problem with a twenty seven thousand dollar price tag um that we get stuck with. And it was, it was that problem uh for a while until, and we are lucky we have a harbor master, but
But there's no indication that anybody, any of these other towns would have contributed. As you know, boats that have been here have been in Bath where the budget is much larger. Um so I, anyway, I'm not sure we want to have the whole discussion while Woody is sitting in the in the seat because the we have the other issue about uh the Coast Guard wanting to remove navigational buoys. And I'd like you to talk about that, Woody, in a larger context, specifically about the ones that they have contacted us about because they're in our waterways. But the concept in general, because I'm not a boater. But I uh currently at least, but once upon a time, I took um courses, uh safe boating, et cetera, et cetera. And I learned about what buoys to pay attention to. And it just seems to me that it's wasteful to to dredge up buoys that have been marking well-established um channels, hazards uh that the novice boater even uh can recognize as something important to pay attention to. As I'm not so worried about the commercial fisherman who goes in and out all the all the time and presumably will remember where the buoys were. Uh or maybe has a sophisticated GPS system to locate them. Uh but uh am I totally off the wall here from the harbor master point of view? Do we need these buoys?
Can I ask, I can I ask one question about the last topic before we go on? Just for your discussions on regards to hook line and sinker. I I'm just curious about it. Have you heard from either of these towns? That, oh, we get it now. We need to have a harbor master. You know, don't worry, don't worry, we'll we'll be we'll try to be better in the future because we're gonna do a harbor master ordinance and we're gonna get a harbor master. Maybe that doesn't inform your decision at all or affected at all, but I'd be kind of curious to know if they see the error in their ways, or they think, well, no, we we have these other towns will keep insuring us. We we'll we'll keep, we'll keep not bothering uh for a harbor master. So and I was just a it was a question I had, and I don't know if that's even even relevant. Bronwyn, in answer your question, uh when it's beautiful and sunny out and your GPS is working, you probably don't need buoys. But I will tell you, when you're sailing and it gets foggy, or you're in a boat that gets foggy and you think you know you're where you are, and the G your little GPS tells you where it thinks you are. When you see that buoy and you read the number four and it's that's where you think you thought you were on the chart, it is a very, very comforting thing. Now, whether it's, you know, whether you can afford to, you know, someone's got to do cost benefit analysis, but those buoys, they really do serve a purpose, particularly if the weather's bad. If your if your GPS has gone out on you. Um so they do, and the the buoy, as I understand it, really, the only buoy we're gonna lose in Georgetown proper is the last buoy further most south uh.
At the mouth of sheep's.
Yeah, at the mouth of the sheep's get. That's the one we're gonna lose. It's a flashing. It's got a flashing red light on it that you can see from a distance. Maybe a lot of people have their G they're on their GPS. They they go by it if they're they're heading up. They're heading up north, wherever they're going, Pemaquid Point. Maybe they don't even look at it. But there's a lot of people who look at it and it it just reaffirms where they are. Okay, and I've talked to a few because my opinion is one person's opinion, really. I'm no, I got no expertise at all. But I I I've talked to four or five, you know, maritime, you know, mariners that I've run into when I knew you wanted to see me. And they all agree. I mean, it's kind of to say, it's like saying you have GPS in your car, so we what do we need to say that's exit twelve for? You know, everybody knows it. Your your GPS is gonna say, take the next exit in two hundred feet, you know, and we but we still we still like seeing that's exit twelve. I mean, it's still, it's reassuring. So to me, to me, you know, they serve some purpose. Uh a a more significant buoy, if you've ever gone to Damerscove. And if you're a boater and you haven't gone to Damerscove, you should go to Damerscove. It's 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 not in Georgetown. It's southwest of us a little bit, but there there's a buoy there going into a very narrow channel that they're gonna take out. And again, it's not, it's not up to us. But you know, that to me, when I've gone in there, I've always been glad that buoy was there. You know, and I recognize this as a dollars and cents thing, but you know, that's at least the argument. That's the argument for 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 keeping the buoys that are there.
Thank you. There was a comment in the uh a couple moments in the chat that we might want to consider at some point, but any other, I don't want to be the only person asking questions.
And 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 just for background sake, I I know the board is aware, and I know I believe Woody is, but I know we have a few folks that aren't. Uh Representative Allison Hepler is chair of the Marine Resources Committee in Maine, and it was through her that we actually learned about the Coast Guard's public notice about the proposed buoy removals. And I felt it was an issue that could affect Georgetown in a way that I wanted to make sure that, you know, if this board was wanting to put a letter in, public comment is due by the middle of June, I believe, just shy of town meeting, that we have the time to get the research and letter off. And as a coastal town, one of Maine's oldest, that might carry some credence in that discussion.
I'm gonna send the letter anyway as a harbor master. I gotta, I with the Maine Harbor Masters Association, we all got the the Coast Guard message on atons and
Yeah.
And uh so I'm I'm I as just as the harbor master, not speaking for, because I am speaking to town a little bit, but um uh I'm gonna put in my two cents for what it's worth that there's a reason those buoys have been there and right.
That, yeah, that's the, that's my big thought. There's a reason the buoys have been there, and it took a few hundred years to do the navigational research that put them there. And ripping them out, what does that cost versus what does it cost to leave them there? I I haven't seen anybody try to answer that question.
I think all they're concerned about is the maintenance cost.
Yeah, it's gotta cost more to keep them. Because they've got to chain chain and they've got to, and every now and then they get loose, that that big buoy tender, it it's it it's gotta save the money to take it out. Um you know, maybe not that first year, but but over time, I I I think I'd be pretty safe in guessing that.
You're going down a slippery slope if you start taking them out.
Yeah, I'm I'm yeah, I'm not gonna, I have no desire to see him go. I'm I'm definitely.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you there. I just technology fails and those do not. So.
Right.
And I and I would just note in the chat, we did receive a couple of comments, while they're timely, and I just flagged to folks. We can't always get to the chat, but it is noted by Terry and Susan that uh thank you to Woody, even with the GPS, people like to see buoys. Allison Freeman concurs. And Lisa Sabatine notes, I'm an amateur boater and do not have a GPS system on my boat. I rely heavily on buoys. And what does it cost to get a system to see the new virtual buoys? I don't have the answer to that, Pam, and I don't believe this board does it at this stage. So.
But that would be an individual cost as well. And there's a certain, there's a benefit to have a public system that anyone can rely on without having to purchase another system to navigate those those areas. Um the other question that's that we might want to answer is from Judy Teller, address where the owners are of hook, line and sinker. Do we know that?
I don't. The owner, I know the owner had charges. Unfortunately, it's just not relevant. And the reason it's not relevant is because that knucklehead, you wouldn't get a nickel out of him. You know, you could try to get a DA to charge it with a misdemeanor of of you know, abandoning a a motorcraft or something like that. But um I just I I spent a quarter of my time as a lawyer for forty years in Farmington telling badly aggrieved people to not waste their time and money going after some knucklehead who smashed their car, did this, did that. You just, it's just pouring money, it's just pouring money down a hole to 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 want to get this guy to be responsible for for all the damage he's caused.
Yeah, I mean, this, his life circumstances ha- are gonna get us nowhere. His life, I mean, he's got nothing to offer us because of the the way.
And a Rousick has begun the abandonment process on the boat, which then kind of takes it more away from that individual and into how can they get to the point of removing it? So just to add that in as part of that conversation. Were there other questions for Woody? Before we let him go and we'll revisit both of those topics shortly.
Is there anything else we should know, Woody? I mean, do you have a report as harbor master, harbor master since you're with us?
Uh no, I think I think I'll I'll rest on that. I will say one thing, which maybe informs us a little bit about buoys. If you are taking a sailing trip anywhere and you don't have paper charts, paper charts you can look at and see the lighthouses and the buoys and where you are on paper. Yet anybody would say that was negligence. You don't just, you don't just say, I've got a GPS and I've got a backup GPS, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go sail here, sail there. You have paper charts. And I mean, I think that's, you you know, that's maybe analogous to kind of what what you're trying to weigh in regards to the buoys.
When you send that letter off, Woody, could you send us a copy? When you sent that letter off, Woody, could you send us a copy just so we can?
Sure.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening, everyone.
Well, thank you.
My pleasure.
And so we'll jump back to the regular agenda and we'll revisit those items momentarily. In your packet for correspondence, I put in a bulletin from the Maine Department of Labor regarding paid medical family leave. I also included the Saginaw County, County Budget Public Hearing Notice. That hearing was yesterday. We put in the legislative bulletins of number 14 and 15 from the Maine Municipal Association. It's quite fun to go through number 14, then realize that some of the questions they had are answered in the next one. So I like when they come back to back. I also included from the Midcoast Council of Governments, a Georgetown Culvert report that is technically a draft. I believe we will be getting a final, though we've received this draft for a couple of weeks now and we've not seen the final, so I just wanted to include it. The data on those culverts, just for background, came from the meeting that John, Charlie and I had with folks from KELT and an organization that KELT is working with on, Midcoast Council Governments. Yes. So that had it for correspondence. Again, we will be putting on the Maine Climate Council's official recognition of the grant and other info on the next agenda. I had no continuing items, and I've said that for a few meetings, so I imagine we're going to get a bunch of them very soon. And with that, I will stop talking for a moment as I turn this over to board members for their updates.
All right. Since the last meetings, I've had a planning board and they didn't have a lot. There was nothing, no permits, but they did get all of their, did get their surveys back and they're excited to count and tabulate all of the answers off that, off their surveys for the structure and rentals. And did a field trip with the TOPMB. And they're, we're gonna, instead of having the rocks down there by the wharf where the deck is, they're going to have curbing put along the pavement. And probably move two of the rocks over on the other side where the precipice is between the sign and the bay shack. And they were looking at the library to place a gazebo that the library wants to put in. So I guess they can get out of the bugs or something when it's summertime there. That's all I have presently.
Thank you, John.
Okay. I had a meeting with the Conservation Commission last night. And while they're very excited about approval of their, of the climate resiliency grant in which we're partnering with Arousik to do hydro, hydrological studies. I think we should be aware that there are several, that, well, that life is uncertain these days. We do not yet have actual cash. There are papers to file. And it's a, the money is federal money, which surprises me that it's still available. There's been some sort of, and I don't know where it came from, whether it was a state proposal or came from the feds. But $5,000 was added to the grant in order to meet potentially new federal reporting requirements. That it's, it's a grant that was, is without a match, so it doesn't impact our budget. But it suggests that this may not be as smooth sailing as we'd like to believe. And there's, they have a meeting with the Arousik Treasurer and our finance director and the people, the other people involved in running the grant to determine how to handle the accounting process. Because Arousik is the official sponsor, the official grantee. And they'll be working out how to dispense, how to disper money between the two towns as expenses are incurred. They've had a good response to the mosquito presentation scheduled for the 15th of May in a, on Zoom. I think it starts at 6:30. The link is available on their website. And by request at the town office, I'm sure. They've had 70 people sign up. And even if they don't all come, they'll perhaps look at the recording and figure out what to do short of spraying their lawns. And I had a, I just wanted to share a message that was sent to me, forwarded to me by Kathy Gravino from Sharon Klein, Associate Professor at the School of Economics in Orano, sharing her brief that the Environmental, Environmental Protection Agency has terminated the four-year EPA STAR grant that's provided funding for research at UMaine for the last two years. And that's a, it's a program that supports community solutions to resiliency, essentially, which is very much what this hydrology grant is about. That's it for conservation. Solid Waste Committee. Everything is running fine there. We have a new substitute employee who's working out very well. But recently, there was an incident where a resident brought in a lot of construction waste. And it was from a, a, a house he was building. And Jim Coombs told him that the ordinance prohibited, that, well, the ordinance insisted that if you had a building permit to build a house, you had to have, you had to provide for removal of the waste privately, either with a dumpster or someone picking it up. And the resident contested that, showed him the language in the permit, which talks about if you have a contractor, you have to have a dumpster or a private disposal area. The Solid Waste Committee is unanimous in wanting that provision to include anyone who has a permit, any building permit. Because it doesn't matter who's building the house. The amount of construction waste is likely to be the same. And the issue for them is about capacity, not who's paying to have it removed. However, this piece of the ordinance is in the building permit. So it, it is in the purview of the planning board. And I don't know if the planning board addressed that issue at their most recent meeting. I understand there may be some disagreement between the two bodies as to what the wording should be. So I assume it's not something that can be resolved before the current town meeting. But it's an issue that's not going to go away. And it will be of concern, something that has to be worked out with the, the two bodies or through the select board. And I think that's it for my liaison stuff.
Can I ask the planning board member who's here about that?
You are the chair. You've got that problem.
Did you bring that up? Did I forget to write that down in my notes?
Yes, we did bring it up.
Okay, sorry.
And a, a little bit of background on it. That specific section was put in the building permit ordinance. I forget, 10, 12 years ago, something like that. Pretty much at the request of the Solid Waste Committee because they had contractors coming in and dumping debris. They did not feel at that point in time that it was within their purview to put it in their ordinance. So we stepped up and said, well, we'll put it in ours. And that's why it specifically says contractors. And we talked about it at the last meeting. And our concern is right now that a suggested change was made to where you say individuals and contractors. Kind of a, a knee jerk reaction. I don't know what all the implications are if you do that. If you make it open to everybody, where's the, where's the dividing line? What size building do you need to have? I mean, if, if it's a hundred by, a hundred square foot shed, that trips the trigger for a building permit. Is that what we're looking for? I, I don't know. We, we need to, we, the planning board, want to investigate it further
Perfect.
to see what the implications are of various suggestions. And, and then make a suggest, you know, make a recommendation to draft something for the ordinance. And it can be addressed at any time, whether the select board feels it needs to be addressed as soon as possible and have a special town meeting for it, or we wait until the next town meeting next year. But we don't want to just jump into it willy nilly without investigating all the possible implications.
Perfect. Sounds nuts. Sounds good. And you got just under a year if we want to get it on next year's ordinances, right?
And I, I did have a conversation with Dave Polito. And it basically, it revolved around the same thing about, let's make sure about what we're doing. And let's not rush into something and then create another problem.
Yep.
And he had no problems with putting it off to next year.
Awesome. Sorry about that, Bronwyn. I just.
No, no, that's fine. I, I think that, I mean, I didn't have that information. And it's great that Bob is here. I think that is an issue for the, because the Solid Waste Committee isn't intimately familiar with all of the ordinances that come out of the planning board. Even know what triggers which kind of building permit. But the attraction of having it be connected to a building permit is that that's a very objective standard. And it's easily applied, you know? So you, you can have a list of whoever has a building permit for whatever size building we have determined, mutually determined is the trigger. And then it's not, oh, you're a contractor. That's where ambiguity comes in there too, because suppose a contractor is building his own home. It's, it's not about, you know, it's about the waste. That's all.
The two committees are cooperating.
Perfect. That's, that's what we need right there. Awesome. Thank you.
Was there any more on your report, Bronwyn, or?
No, no, that's it. That's it.
Aria?
Hi, yes. So the Rec Committee, Get to Know Your Neighbor occurred on May 4, and I'm pleased, as many of you probably already know, to congratulate once again our 2024 Citizens of the Year, Kathy and Bob Gravino. Very well deserved. It was a fun celebration and lots of folks, the Rec Committee really did a great job. We had local businesses involved and the Georgetown Jammers. All of them get a, a big thank you. The Osprey Periwinkle Pies, the Jammers, the Working League, the GCC for hosting. I think I've covered everybody, but it, it was quite fun. And I think, I don't know what the numbers were, but maybe 150 to 170. And Pam, you can put something in the chat or if Judy's still on. And then May 20th is the first meeting of our Working Waterfront Committee. So we'll be doing that as a hybrid. And some of those folks may be on listening now, and I think that's it. The Board of Appeals hasn't met. And if the harbor, I don't believe that the harbor committee, I'll have to look at their next schedule. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Aria. Any questions on Aria's report? If not, I'll jump into mine as a town administrator update. Tonight, we had the school budget hearing, as everyone here was aware. We did work out a few kinks on the audio and we are ready tomorrow for the town budget hearing, same place, and we will be working. Yep, Bronwyn.
Tyler, how many people were in the room? Excuse me, how many people were in the room?
I believe 18 or 19.
So there were more people on the Zoom than in the room. And much of what was said was totally incomprehensible. Aileen is difficult to understand in a public setting. And if you're there, she has a very high pitched voice. She tends to speak very quickly. But you have to work out a way that she's, that, that the presenter is closer to the mic. You were perfectly understandable, but nothing else was really clear.
And, and I can just share for background, we initially had planned to use just the Promethean Board for the school budget hearing, which would have put me and the audio and all of that much closer to Elaine. After we left yesterday at about 5:30, I got an email from the principal that things had changed and there was going to be a projector involved. And that put us into a corner. And we tomorrow will definitely be making sure that the camera, the microphone are a lot closer to our financial advisory committee and Mary. And I know that everybody can hear Bob when he speaks and everybody can hear Mary McDonald. So we're definitely going to be doing some more testing tomorrow. But the curve ball of the, there were some curve balls today that we had to work through.
It also appeared to me that the, the first row of chairs for the audience was too far back. Assume it will be empty and force them forward. Because people always take the last row first. I mean, it's like kindergarten. And there's no way, you just have to get them further, further up front. And don't keep on sharing the screen if you're not talking about the screen. Because from the perspective of somebody sitting back home, the screen is down, you'd like to see the room. Who's standing up? Who's speaking? What's going on? That's, that, those are just my comments, and I want to thank you, having made all the negatives first. Thank you for the effort you put into making this work and having a hybrid situation. And I hope it does, you know, I hope we can maximize its impact.
Absolutely. And I, and I, and I will just say that, you know, we will work through that and we will be more forceful tomorrow on getting folks up to the front. Just for the screen sharing side of things, because we had the projector involved as well as the Promethean Board, the projector is unable to be compatible with Zoom because there was no camera involved. And so there were two people running the screen share. Tomorrow, there will be one, and I have good marching orders. And Bronwyn, I'm thankful for the negative first and positive later, because that's how my mom used to do it as a kid. So thank you. And I would note that next Tuesday is Candidates Night at 6:00 PM, same place, at GCS in the gymnasium or on Zoom. And town meeting is just shy of one month away, Saturday, June 14. At the next select board meeting, I'll be bringing forward a warrant for a select board approval. I've also spoke with citizen Bob Trebona, and he is happy to post the warrant around town again, as he's done in the past, and we are very thankful. I want to flag that absentee ballots are now available at the town office. Election Day is June 10. You can request a ballot in person, by phone or by mail. You can also vote early, or more legally known as vote absentee in the clerk's presence during regular business hours of the town office. The last day to request an absentee ballot is Thursday, June 5, though you have until the close of polls on election day to return that ballot. Election Day is June 10, and the polls will be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. In regards to the county budget hearing last night, the hearing itself was pretty brief, but there was a, about a 40-minute discussion afterwards that proved pretty informative. Some of the community representatives, particularly from smaller towns, had shared that they really liked the regional approach of an animal control officer in Lincoln County and encouraged our folks at the county commission to explore that, something that I will be on a soapbox and agree with them all day long. The second discussion that really took up a bulk of that time, the county gets one check from the town of Georgetown a year, and it's a very sizable check. And it's a check that usually is the reason we have a tax anticipation note, depending on the timing of commitment. Many towns, Woolwich in particular, last night, were sharing that they hope the county will explore allowing Uh, many towns, Woolwich in particular, last night were sharing that they hope the county will explore allowing more than one payment, potentially two, potentially four. There was some pushback from the commissioners in that there's a lot more involved in that process than as simple. I would note though, we make monthly payments to the school district and they never let cash flow. So I think that the county will be modeling, you know, their time of year where they cash peaks and lowers and it's an ongoing discussion. But in terms of the hearing itself, I think the hearing was adjourned by six oh four, but folks stuck around till about six forty-three. Um, I would just note as well that Alex will be out of the office this Thursday for some appointments. Kathy Farina, however, our new deputy town clerk and deputy treasurer will be at the office for a full day or pretty close to a full day. We will also have Kathy signed up for some remote BMV trainings next week. So she will be doing town training. So she is ready to get cars registered. Alex has been training or in person, but there's a lot of technical sides of things. I like to joke. The rules for car registrations are very small. The book of exceptions is much larger. So I would just note it'll be an informative training for Kathy. We also have Angie, our prospective town clerk and tax collector, signed up for trainings next month. It's hard to pull her during the school day right now. Regarding the BMV, I want to note that it's very likely the town of Georgetown will lose its heavy truck registration status temporarily in July. Uh, to register vehicles, there's a lower level of passenger plates and so on. And for heavy trucks, you need a higher level of training and sophistication. Georgetown clerks have always shot for that, but you have to go through training. So folks at Maine Moss and companies like that will likely have a two-part registration in the intervening training on heavy truck status, but it's something we are working to get back. And lastly, I just wanted to flag that Georgetown Historical Society is opening its new exhibition on May 24th. Uh, fifty years, fifty treasures, selections from the Georgetown Historical Society collections. I'm looking forward to that. So I gave a lot of information. Are there any questions for me? And if not, we can move into old business. And that old business is a possible determination on the inclusion of a warrant article regarding a proposed septic easement on town lands adjacent to Blueberry Hill Road. Last week, we had a public hearing on the subject. There were many questions raised. I have the written answers from Mike uh Field that went out. I have Mike also online to answer any questions or offer any thoughts on this process, but we really are at the point where we're going to have to make a decision whether or not to put this on the warrant for uh decision by the full town or to pull the plug and not do so. But as we're working on drafting the warrant, it's time to move forward. I will share that we are still awaiting word back from the Department of Conservation on that IPCAR preserve question. However, after meeting with Kathy Gravino, going over maps, uh, looking at some maps with John and also Mike. As more time goes by, Aria had previously asked what my confidence was that this in fact was not part of the restrictions of IPCAR. I said two thirds a week ago. I'm much closer to three fourths of the way there. Should the board decide tonight to move this forward to town meeting? And we receive any information that is contrary to that, that is information that could definitely be discussed at town meeting as part of that overall debate as well. So I've talked a lot and I would turn this over to the board to start offering their thoughts and any questions for me or Mike. And I see Aria's hand up.
Yes, um, thanks Tyler. Um, even though you do, you, you are talking. Um, I won't say it's a lot. It's always helpful to us. So I want to thank you again. Um, secondly, I did, I was approached by a community member today um who expressed concern uh about uh us granting an easement. Um, so I just want to highlight that and I encourage that member to um make his voice known. If he couldn't tonight, then either in uh some kind of communication to us and certainly if it makes it onto the warrant at town meeting. So thanks.
Thank you, Aria.
Well, I, we're in kind of a difficult spot because the town has previously granted easements like this and um I, even though I don't, I, I'm still not sure that it's, that the system should be, is, should be allowed or would be legal if it is allowed, but where we've already done it on the other, on for the other people. Um, I don't think it's exactly fair to not at least have it go in front of the town. You know, it, regardless of whether, you know, it, it's going to have to end up there regardless. So um, if we find out more stuff, it may become a moot point um to have it go there. And you know, if we can figure out whether the um, the, the permit, the um septic permit is actually correct and up to date and has all the proper facts as far as being uh um, a legitimate replacement system or however you want to look at it. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not big on it, but unfortunately we've kind of put ourselves in a, in a hole here. At least that's the way I look at it. Bronwyn?
I agree, I, I agree with you, John. I'm, I'm not uh, I'm not happy about it. But I think we have put ourselves in a a bad place. Um, not just because the town has done it before, which are things that we didn't do. None of us were on the board when those things occurred. But we had, you and I have been on the board for a couple of years now while this procedure went on. While our code enforcement officer said, maybe this is possible. How about this? Where we said to the residents, this is what you'd have to do. You'd have to get permission to go under the road. You'd have to get a certified plan. Well, they did all of those things. And for us now to say, we're not going to have the town vote about it. Or to say, as some people at the hearing suggested, that there should be a, a monetary note attached that this is adding value to your property. So you should pay the town for the privilege or we should sell the property. I don't see either of those as suddenly viable additions to the conversations that have gone on so far. Um, would suggest that we, in fact, I could move, that we authorize Tyler to draft a warrant article in this, on this septic system. A warrant audible, article to ask if the town wants to grant the easement for a septic system. With the proviso that we do not, this is a double, so I'm having trouble with it. But um in other words, draft the article. We don't have to vote tonight to put it on the warrant. If it turns out that this land is subject to conservation easements, that would cost us a lot of money. Um, but we should certainly draft the article. I would further suggest for, at least for discussion, that this be um a written.
Like a secret ballot?
A secret ballot, yes.
So that was a motion. Was there a second?
I'll second it. I mean, obviously I, I uh have had much less to do with this because I haven't been through the procedure. Um, but I'm hearing you loud and clear and I agree that the process should be fair and it should be consistent. And um, and if we've been talking to uh the homeowners and I know we have um, about this process, it does not feel uh it would lack integrity if we then pulled out the rug from them. So I do actually think, subject to, you know, conditioned upon the conservation question, it should go on the warrant. And let, let the town vote on it.
So should this motion pass, I will include that on the draft warrant for the next meeting. And if there's any information that comes in that leads us to have pause or question, it could always be removed at that point. But at the next meeting, we will be approving a warrant and at that point it goes to the voters either way.
Can I ask a question though, uh, of Mike actually?
I was.
Yeah, the, the plan that's been uh proposed. First of all, who has to approve that? Is it, it's just a plumbing issue? So it's approved by the code enforcement officer?
That's correct, Bronwyn. The licensed site evaluator draws up the plan, the septic permit. It's a form, state form. And then uh I look it over and um approve the permit. And then once the construction starts, there's a uh inspection when they first dig up the ground, it's called scarification. And then there's a final inspection by me to making sure that things like, you know, it's where it's supposed to be, there's measurements, there's uh um, yeah, where the tank, filters, things that I look at, elevations, that type of stuff.
And has the, has the proposed plan met all of the requirements?
It has. Um, there is some question about replacement first, original or new rather.
Well, there's no replacement is from what I can understand.
Right. And this is a replacement septic system permit. There's a couple of differences between a new system and a replacement. Um, so my plan uh as well is to reach out to the, the license site evaluator who I have, ever I have, that's who I spoke with about the holding tank and stuff. And I'll get those and get that answered as well.
So would he have to resubmit a different plan if it was a new facility?
I, I think I'm going to defer to him because I'm not quite sure. Um, you know, the couple of things in this particular case mainly is the distances between this field, the disposal field and the well. Um, the wells rather, uh, because you have a little bit of, I don't know, leeways, word I want to use between a replacement system versus a new system. Just, just a different way of calculating and that kind of thing. Um, but the, but setbacks like to the property line, those, they stay the same to ten feet. Um, and a couple of the other things that came up into questions are more or less the same, but I will get some clarification on that.
So I'd like to amend my motion uh to uh, this is tentatively to go on the warrant on the condition that the amended plan meets all the criteria for a new septic system. And that there is no conflict with open space requirements on the town land.
Do you accept that friendly amendment, Aria?
Yeah, I'll second that. And, and I want to thank Mike for all the work that he's done um on our behalf on this project. Probably Chris did some work before then. I recall sitting in on meetings before I was on the board where Chris was talking about this.
He did a lot of, he, the idea came from him, which is the reason I don't think we can walk away from it.
Right. And Mike, do you think that you can have that conversation prior to our next select board meeting, two weeks from tonight?
Oh yeah. I'm fairly, I'm confident, yes.
Thank you.
All right. With all that, um, I don't have any more questions from Mike actually. So if everybody else is all set, I'll take a vote on
Bronwyn's amended motion.
Bronwyn's amended motion.
And I bet three to zero on that. Thank you very much. And Ari, are you raising your hand to speak or just to vote?
No, my hand is there. I want, I'm trying to get it to lower. There you go. Zoom's doing its own thing with my hand.
So we've now moved from old business into new business and I am just seeking direction on whether to draft a letter regarding the possible federal decision to remove buoys.
Absolutely.
I agree. So I moved it to, I moved to direct uh Tyler to draft a letter regarding the buoy removal. And I think based on the discussion, our decision is that they should not, we would be objecting. Uh, objecting to that idea. Thank you.
And standing up for the concept that amateur boaters rely on these buoys, do not always have GPS. And in bad weather, everyone relies on buoys. Navigational aids, visual, in place, not virtual. The stronger you want to be, the better, as far as I'm concerned. I, have we solicited uh input from our fishing community on this issue?
We are working on that, on getting feedback.
And I'll note that Pam Gannell indicates that, that uh, community members can submit uh comments directly to the Coast Guard regarding this issue. So thanks Pam for that.
And the more the better, I would say.
I agree.
So we, so we had an enthusiastic moving and seconding to be strong in this letter. We have not voted yet.
Um, everybody in favor?
And that looks like three to oh. I will have that and my goal will be to have a draft to you folks by the in your packet. So we'll have time to make tweaks ahead of our vote. Uh, I also bring us now to the request from a Rousick regarding funding for boat removal of the hook line and sinker. And I would just flag that the request from the first selectman was up to four thousand dollars and the ask was done as neighbors, not as people who had the boat previously living here. Though we saw the whole letter in the packet from Walter and we've heard from Woody and.
Um, you know, I just wonder, um, I don't know that, I, I don't recall that there was a timeline. I'd like to know, is anybody really committed to doing this for them? Um, but I will, um, I will listen to my colleagues and um as well and um I, I guess that's, I'm still, I'm still a little bit, I'm less conflicted, I should say on this. Uh, but um I don't know that we, I'm just wondering if we defer decision on this until we find out if any towns are actually going to support them or if we just uh cut bait now and, and make our decision.
So I believe Woolwich is meeting next week, their select board, and we'd probably have an answer. And I see Mike nodding his head that yes, that is the case.
Jonathan, what do you think?
For my two cents, I'm, I wouldn't be forgiving him any money. We've still got one sitting on the mud over in Long Island. So it's, and just the, the paying for it just makes more people more apt to just abandon their boats without any, you know, recourse. And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be for it. That's just me.
I'm hearing you, John.
I'm basically not for it either. I think Woody made a really good point about harbor masters. Both of those towns have waterfront. I thought every town with waterfront had to have a harbor master.
So did I.
Only if you're regulating moorings. There, there's more to that side of can of worms. We would have thought that they would have as well. But they don't regulate their moorings. They don't have a fee for their moorings. And in statute, that's one of the things that ties in.
Well, maybe they should. That's, you know, that's.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing thoughts of Bronwyn is opposed and John is opposed. Aria is on the fence, but would like to see what folks are doing. Do we want to defer or do we want to take action tonight?
If, if, if I, I'm willing to, I'm willing to uh go along and, and oppose it. Um, I would like uh I'd like to be very diplomatic in how we
Absolutely.
oppose it because I um, I just am concerned that we're going to need some neighborly help down the road. And uh, I mean, John's point is well taken, you know? I, I, we certainly don't want to encourage people to just assume that somebody's going to take up the slack and pay for their boats. Um, but I, um, I know that what a hassle it was to have a hook line and sinker here for as long as it was. And so just concerned that we will be left out in the cold sometime when we need help. That is, that is my main concern.
But Aria, I don't think that our making a contribution to this effort in this instance, in any way guarantees that there would be cooperation with other towns were we in the same situation.
I do know that.
If the towns, if, so maybe an opening to leave is, you know, if you guys want to appoint a harbor master and work with us and our harbor master to address these issues regionally. Like we have a mutual aid agreement with the fire departments.
Yeah.
Okay. But there's no mutual aid right now and nobody's ever helped us when we had a wreck in town. And so it's just, it's, it's an ask for money without any um structural change. We're still going to be trying to, I mean, it's been a game from one harbor to another. Get this boat out of our harbor so it's somebody else's problem. That's really been the way that, that all of these boats have been treated. And paying for the, for it when it lands in somebody else's waters is not going to solve that problem. And paying for that, some, for it when it lands in somebody else's waters is not gonna solve that problem. If we want to talk about a regional solution, since the state doesn't have money to take care of it. Um, you know, like the regional solution to animal control. Um, with the smaller towns, I'd be happy to be involved in that, but I'm not happy to just fork over certainly not four thousand bucks.
And I, I absolutely agree. I mean, I think if we were to seriously consider this, which we are not right now, it would have to come with some conditions. Um, and I don't know, uh, it, I, I also um, appreciate what you're saying about their failure, you know, we've never had uh, um, a contribution from another town, but maybe we've not asked.
Well, no, I don't think we have asked because I don't think it was considered appropriate.
Right, of course. But, you know, that would be part of this structural change, just like you know, this regional idea. And, and that is for another day. I think we do either make the decision today. Um, and I will follow, you know, I'm happy to follow the lead on this, uh, because I, I'm the newest member. So I'm happy to follow the two of you on the lead on this.
So do we want to have a motion to deny the request is what it sounds like consensus is? Or would we rather just not take a stand and that in effect is saying we're not funding the request? I just need to know what the thought is.
Well, I think we should be upfront with them. I think we should be upfront with them. I don't like this inaction. I feel disingenuous on our part.
I suppose you're right. And it, it, it also, but what it, what I do feel is that if we take a stand, we're leading Woolwich to take that stand and they're a bigger, they have a, a bigger base than we do in terms of, and the, and the boat is right off their shore as well.
Oh, good point, good point.
So that's the only sense in which I would be inclined. Uh, is, you know, perhaps to temporize by, by responding that um, the board isn't interested in discussing a contribution apart from a mutual aid agreement for future situations.
Is that in the form of a motion right there?
I don't know. If you like it, I'll make it a motion. If you don't like it, I'll take it back.
I, I think it might make sense to have some conversations as well, just directly person to person about if you were looking to have the route of getting your own harbor master and ordinance will help you get that way. But I don't know if that necessarily needs to be a part of the letter on why we're saying no, because it sounds to me the consensus is it's not Georgetown Baileywick.
Well, here's back to the question of do we defer it until after Woolwich makes its decision? You know, Mike said that's next week, right? Is it on their agenda though? Is it?
Uh, I can double check while we're talking, uh, but I understand that my understanding is it's on the agenda and Walter's coming to the meeting to talk to them. Um, but I get any, yeah, that's the plan. And they meet, there's like next like board meetings next Wednesday, week from tomorrow.
And I will note that Walter had offered to come tonight. I did want to give this board the chance to have a hard conversation though, without doing it in front of the prospective person.
I appreciate that.
I think it might be appropriate for Tyler to talk with other town, you know, like with the administrator in Woolwich and whoever in uh, Arousik. Um, to convey our concerns that they have no harbor master and no harbor ordinance. And uh, let them respond to that. Don't say yes or no to the request for money, except that perhaps we're not enthusiastic about it since they don't have any of these things in, in place to deal with situations like this in the future.
And that's where you tack on the amount of um, time our harbor master was already dealing with this. So that's the, you know, that's the push. But um, I, I like that idea. I think deferral might be a good way uh, to handle this for now and then come back. See what Woolwich does, see what Tyler's able to find out um, from the other towns.
So is that a motion to table, Aria?
I want to move to defer it to table it to um, our next meeting, please. Or i- i- if it's, if it's ripe for discussion at our next meeting. Um, I don't want to kick, I don't want to kick the can down too far. Um, I value John's opinion and so want to make sure that we handle it during his administration, so to speak.
Defer it till the next meeting then?
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Is there a vote?
Okay, second. I'll second that motion.
All right. Till the next meeting.
And that is unanimous. Would the board like me to invite Walter to that meeting?
Not really.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we just get the information and we probably don't need that. He, he wrote a very thorough um, email to us.
And so the next item of business, now that we've deferred action on the Arousik request, is the designation of a prospective town meeting moderator. I have spoken with John Cunningham, who moderated Georgetown's meeting last year. He is eager to do so again. The reason I am worded it designation of a prospective town meeting moderator, technically on election day morning, the moderator has to be elected by ballot. However, the town of Georgetown has never elected somebody who's not been the pick. So for what that's worth.
We've never had a contest.
Bingo, yes. So.
I would like to, I would, I would move to ask Tyler to uh, invite Mr. Cunningham to moderate the town meeting.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
I think it would be his fourth in a row.
At, yeah, at least, yeah.
All in favor? All in favor?
That is three to zero. And the very last item was an addition. And that was seeking direction on whether or not to draft a warrant article regarding making the clerk and tax collector positions appointed on this upcoming warrant.
Oh, I thought we had already voted to ask you to do that.
We had voted to ask me to add it to an agenda. I had thought we'd done the same thing, Bronwyn, till I was elbowed deep in minutes and realized that I had not followed your direction.
Well, I move that we put on the warrant an article to make tax collector town clerk appointed. And I realize that will take effect in twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? And that is unanimous. And so that ends the business portion of the meeting. I would note that we have many items per signature. Uh, cemetery deed as well as a veteran's exemption that only John needs to sign the veteran's exemption. And we do have a slew of abatement applications and certificates. So we will coordinate a time to get together soon. And John, this is back to you.
All right. Is there any public comment?
Hi, uh, Kelly James. I want to thank you all for always taking careful consideration in all things, especially this Blueberry Hill discussion that keeps going back and forth. Um, as say, an owner of the land that is out there for all of town, one of the considerations that I keep hearing is it's got value to whoever puts that septic there. I feel like it's everybody's land. I hear you discussing precedent, precedent. This is kind of where we've gotten stuck in this point. What I would like the select board to do is to consider ways some way forward that we have a, I don't know if I call like a better understanding of what we as a town want to do with town land, whether that is having the T O P M B in the Conservation Commission talk a little more or something so that you don't keep getting stuck of what we did it here, we did it there. Because at some point we're gonna run out of that land, let people put septic, septics on and do these various things. Can we just think of maybe a broader discussion that not just reactive, proactive? In that sense, and that was all. But I really, I appreciate all you're doing and you keep getting cornered into these awkward situations. So my thought is maybe we start looking proactively going forward. Anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Kelly.
Is there any other public comment? I don't see any.
We look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow with a budget hearing.
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, second.
All right, in favor?
Not everybody.
Good night.
Night. Thank you.